And I think that's basically it. People that brought it to my attention that won't be here. I'm sorry, and Denise Taylor Moore will not be here. Our first speaker for the evening, John Marshall Lee. We will keep the time. I've asked Councilwoman Jeanette Aaron to keep the record for us.
I haven't seen it.
Testing, testing, testing. Thank you. Is there a quorum? Oh, this quorum is showing up. Okay, thank you. I'm waiting for you to be uninterrupted, for me to have a speaker, and for a quorum to be present, which are the normal things that are happening here. Thank you. So, who speaks for the unhoused in our community? That's a new description referring to those who cannot, for one reason or another, find shelter each night from seasonal elements. As with the birds of the air, we assemble a group of volunteers, one day per year for an annual bird count or homeless count, either one. Where is an overall housing board or commission, as we had in operation more than 20 years ago? Did the Fair Housing Commission fail to receive mayoral appointments for a series of years, and failing ability to form quorums and conduct business disappear in plain sight, and then, within the past two years, disappear from the city website also, but not from conversations? As a member of the Charter Commission and a monthly volunteer note taker at Communities of HUD subsidized Bridgeport Public Housing, I was surprised to see a responsibility in the current charter last night approved, or last approved in 1993, for a commission on economic development and housing. How's that working out for the city? Would not, nothing happened for 30 years? In development terms or housing terms? Or do we just go with the status quo? Where is mayoral pride or statements on net grand list development the basis of fair taxation? And where is the master plan for housing development and redevelopment in the city? Or perhaps we can look at the Affordable Housing News, which is momentarily an advertisement on only in Bridgeport, summer 2025, and an interview with Ms. Gillian Baldwin, Director of Park City Communities, successor to the Housing Authority of Bridgeport, for the plan. Lighted structures or land requiring remediation previous to residential use are complex challenges, but perhaps a newer approach, working with local construction professionals, might be initiated with city cooperation encouragement that will forestall some of the financing and soil remediation problems. When our sole downtown hotel property was sold for rental use, and the city signed for lodging still stands for years in Exit 27, what's the plan? And what are the prices of new rentals for luxury, affordable, workforce, plain folk, and poor folk residents? By the way, I salute Ms. Baldwin for her work in the recent five years, but why did the article on Park City Communities, if any of you have seen it, and if you haven't seen it, look at it, why did it refer to Bridgewater, Connecticut? Who proof read the article draft? Time will tell.
Our next speaker, Mr. Cecil Young.
Good evening. First of all, I want to again thanks you, Ernest Newton, for what you suggested that they do, which is look into my unjust termination. Now, some of y'all would say, why is he still back down and talking about that same old issue about his unjust termination? Why? Because I got a right to do so. And I'm going to continue to do so, as I said before in the past. And like I was told on the way in the door, here comes trouble. Well, I'm like John Lewis, that he said, here's good trouble. I'm good trouble. So take me as good trouble so far, because I've been good to all of y'all. And I've been good to y'all, because y'all know better. You know right and wrong. And I've given you documentation in black and white. I've given you audio tapes. I've given you videotapes. And I asked you to download your YouTube on Cecil Young Show, come and do your live in color from Soundview Media in Stratford. And I say to you, I pleaded with you, to the council members, to respond to my councilman's request. They asked that you look into my unjust termination. And it was never really filed up on. And I'm saying that I'm not going to let this go. And I'm saying, I'm trying to be decent and trying to be respectful, because I respect all of y'all, whether you believe it or not. But the bottom line is that I don't believe in just letting things go. Not based on what I've been through, not based on what I got to still go through, based on what I've been through. And I'm saying to you, I'm tired of being nice. And I'm going to be even nice, but I'm not going to be out of line. I'm going to be respectable. But there are going to be times when you're going to say, where is he coming from? Because he's going back to where he was before. No, I don't want to go back to where I was before in terms of saying, I'm tired of being treated like the N-word. Okay, I was going to say it outright tonight, but I'm going to save it for the next time, if need be. And my question is to all of you, the council members, have you not sat down with the mayor? Any of you sat down with the powers that be to discuss with them as to why they haven't responded to Councilman Newton's request and Anita's request? There were my council persons who said they wanted to know if whether or not the city was justifiable in terminating me. And to have Councilman George Cruz request that they do this on behalf of him? Okay, because he feels that I deserve that kind of respect? I say to you, Councilman Newton, I'm surprised, okay, that you haven't even taken beyond that, because, believe me when I tell you, it meant a whole lot for me to hear you say what you said. Okay, in terms of the first time you said about the fact that you wanted them to look into my unjust termination. And Joe Ganim got off the stage and ran off the stage, almost like he was being chased. And I say to him, and I say to you, Joe Ganim, as you hear me speak tonight, that I'm not going nowhere. I believe in justice. I believe in right and wrong, and justice delayed or justice denied. And I'm saying, please, hear my cry. I want justice. I say to you, be fair and being impartial. Don't vote in my favor because you think it's right, just because it's right. No, do it because it's right, because it's right. Not because it's wrong. Wrong and right is two different things. And I'm saying, let's make wrong right. And you got time to make wrong right. And I'm saying to you, I'm pleading with y'all. Make it right. You've got the evidence. And download my show this Wednesday on YouTube, Cecil Young Show. You're going to download it, because you're going to see all the evidence in black and white. You're going to hear Dr. Reverend. You're going to hear Jody Paul. You're going to hear city officials and the state Labor Board Commissioners say on the radio, on my tape recorder, confessing and saying, basically, that I've been saying the truth all along. And all I'm saying to you is that, please, hear my cry, respond to my concerns, so that I don't have to go out of the deep end to appointments, that'll make you feel like, okay, he's disrespecting us. It's not about that. It's about right and wrong. And I'm saying, please respond to my issues before I lose my balance. Thank you kindly for hearing my talk.
Our next speaker is Meg Dahl.
Thank you. On August 19th, the city of Stamford issued a public statement assuring its residents that their police department operates in compliance with the Connecticut Trust Act, a state law that defines and limits cooperation between local law enforcement and ICE. Since that August statement was released, however, the U.S. Supreme Court has effectively given federal agents the green light to racially profile, assault, and abduct anyone without due process and without regard to their citizenship status. Every day, we're witnessing disturbing video evidence from around the country documenting the brutal treatment and unlawful detainment of our immigrant neighbors and family members, who remain the primary targets of this offensive. In a city filled with esteemed immigrant residents, the time is past due for Bridgeport to officially go on the record and definitively state their position about ICE activity in the city. As long as assault and kidnapping are felonies in the state of Connecticut, Bridgeporters need to know how the city government and police force plan to respond if these laws are violated here. You're a governing body elected to stand up and protect the people you serve, and we need your service now more than ever. A statement should be issued immediately, vowing that the city of Bridgeport and its police force will uphold state law and respond to any illegal treatment of its residents, whether the alleged perpetrator is acting as a private individual or as an employee of the federal government. Seize this historic moment. Elevate Bridgeport's public image beyond the headlines of murder rates and absentee ballot scandals. Choose to be fearless and patriotic leaders at a time when your courage could literally save lives. Be loud and speak up. Use your power for good. Whenever you or your ancestors got here, and unless you're Native American, all of us ended up in this country as either immigrants, enslaved, or indentured servants, or refugees. That's who's in the room tonight. That's who the American people are. And that's who we in Bridgeport need to fight for. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last two speakers, Jessi Resto, Resto? Okay, and myself. I will ask Councilwoman Jeanette Aaron to take the podium when I speak.
My name is Jess Resto, 110 Jennings Ave PAC president at Park City Magnet School. We just want to say a huge thank you to Councilwoman Richard Ortiz and Councilwoman Mary McBride Lee, not just for supporting our school, but for showing up with us on Saturday. Volunteers, parents, grandparents, teachers, staff, community members, and even our acting superintendent, Dr. Ari, helped donate plants from the Aspetuck Land Trust, along with the BOE Facilities Team. The energy, the teamwork, and the smiles remind us of what community truly looks like. Our playground won't be ready until 2026, but seeing everyone come together shows that Park City Magnet students deserve this support. Thank you again for believing in our school. We're excited to keep this momentum going. And we have a letter from a student to Councilwoman McBride and Councilman Ortiz. Thank you for caring about our school and community. Your support means a lot to us. Being a part of this project made me feel good. I was able to help make my school look more appealing. When I come to school in the morning, I see the work we have done, and it makes me feel proud. I look forward to being part of more projects in the future. Thank you, O'Meara Robinson, 7th grade. So thank you from Park City Magnet. We appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Councilman Ernie Newton, 139th District. And I wasn't, I didn't come here to speak until I saw these raises that are going to affect. And the reason I'm speaking is because we promised labor, agreed with public works, the low-level workers, a $5 increase. They've been waiting a long time. And now, from my understanding, the city wants to reneg and try to bring it down to $4 or $3. But it's all right to give these kind of raises. Now, I don't know about you, but if you can't live off of $163,000, and you need to go up to 100, in between 180, something's wrong with that picture. So we can't have it both ways. You can't tell me that the low-level people will bankrupt the city. But when I look at this, Controller didn't say anything about it. So I'm going to ask the council, I'm going to, you know, see what we can do. Because my understanding on nine-something, we gave them raises. So it's something that this council needs to look at, because let me tell you something, we're going to have some difficult times with what the federal government is doing. And we don't know what the state's going to do to help us. This is not the time for something like this. So I don't know what we could do. I'm going to see if we can table this. And then we can come back and discuss it. But if you're not going to do it for public works, give them a $5 increase, and you're willing to give these folks this kind of increase in between, something is wrong with that. And we got to protect the little guys. These are the big guys. Thank you.
Are there any more speakers? Public hearing is closed.
Hear ye, hear ye, hear ye. As I view the clock on the wall and Ernie's hat out of the other eye. May I? Hear ye, hear ye, hear ye. We're on TV, so we got to be here. All right. How are you? Thanks for joining us. I appreciate it. So, as it is just about 7 o'clock, some might say a couple minutes after, I want to welcome everyone to this regularly scheduled meeting of the city council. As we have agendas in front of us, I would state for, at least for the benefit of the members that are here and the public, that it is a two-page agenda, which means that it should not be one of our, likely be one of the longest meetings. But I would remind the members of the city council that thanks to the advancements in technology, that our meetings are televised, they're live. And so even though there's only a few people here, there could be many, and I hope that they are, interested in city government business and are, you know, participating by watching us there. So just be mindful. And as we do that, I'd ask everyone to stand. Councilwoman and Reverend Mary Lee, you've always been so gracious to allow us your eloquence and appropriateness of prayer. And I'd ask if you would consider, Lee, is going to prayer again tonight? You will. Thank you so much. And with that, as we begin the process of the meeting, starting with a prayer, for Councilwoman and Pastor Mary Lee McBride.
Father God, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for this day that you made. We thank you for our early rise. This morning, we were clothed and yet in our right mind. We thank you, oh God, for you keeping us all day safe without hurt, harm, or danger. You kept us covered with your precious blood. Now, God, we ask you to be in this meeting and on tonight. Ask you, oh God, to bless every council member that's represented here. Those that are not here, we ask you to bestow a blessing on them. Ask you, oh God, to bless the mayor of this great city in the name of Jesus. And, oh God, if there's any sick among us tonight, that the sick say that I'm healed, let the weak say that I'm strong. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. If we could, Councilman, you've always been gracious enough to lead us in a pledge. Would you as well tonight?
I plead to the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as broad.
And I know there's a point of personal, we could sit, but Ernie, you want to point a personal privilege, Councilman Newton, you have the floor.
Thank you. Let the record show that council, our council president could not be here this evening. Denise Taylor Moore, Councilwoman, could not be here. And let's have a moment of silence for Scott Burns, who lost his father-in-law today.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else on any points of, moments of silence or points? Okay. With that, then, we've covered the prayer, the pledge of allegiance, and I'd ask the clerk, Madam Clerk, would you be so kind as to take the roll call and declare whether we have quorum?
Yes, thank you. Jorge Cruz. Dashell Spell. Rolanda Smith. Akin Voight. Jeanette Hearn. Michelle Lyons. Amy Marie Bishop Anisha. Mary M. McBride Lee.
Here.
Richard Ortiz.
Here.
Idenei Eves. Maria Valle. Maria Pereira. Samia Suliman. Ernie Newton. We have a quorum.
Thank you. First item is to approve the council minutes from August 4th. Is there a motion? Is there a second? All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Michelle, Michelle seconded it. All right, matters to refer to on page one, is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second? Okay, hold on a second. Let me get a motion and a second. Is there a motion? Is there a second? All right. Ernie, you want to be heard?
Is that the communications?
Yes, all, all the referred.
Ortiz and who else?
And I think Jeanette moved that. Do you second it? Someone second it? Michelle.
Michelle, thank you.
All right. With that, Councilman Newton, you have the floor.
The municipal employee salary doesn't have a committee that it should go to. It should go to budget. Or ordinance, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Anyone else want to be heard? Did you want to be heard?
No, I just want to make sure it's going to ordinance. I want to make sure it's going to ordinance.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, we're at the top of, I'm sorry, matters on the consent calendar. Is there anyone who wants to remove one of the two items off of this consent calendar? I look to my left, I see no hands, or any cases. I look to my right, I see the same. Ernie, you okay? Okay, is there a motion to approve? Madam Clerk, will you read the consent calendar into the record, and then I'll have a motion and a second to approve it? Sure, so let's read 11124 into the record. We'll vote on it as a consent calendar, and then I'll have Amy Marie, someone move 11434 as the second matter. Madam Clerk, you have the floor on the first item, which remains on the consent calendar.
Thank you. 11124, Economic and Community Development and Environment Committee Report, grant submission, Bridgeport Environmental Task Force, ETF, Community Environmental Benefit Fund, CEBF Number 26398.
Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay. Councilman, would you like to take 11424? 24. Motion's made and seconded on 120.
Akin and who else?
Amy Marie. Does anybody want to be heard on this? Hearing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
So noted. Okay, so now we have a roll call item, which is the Melissa Lanius Matters Committee Report, appointment of Calvin Burwell to the Historic District Commission. Is there a motion and a second, and then we'll do a roll call? Motion to approve is made. Amy Marie.
Amy Marie.
Is there a second? Richie seconded it. Unless somebody wants to discuss it, I'm gonna just put it down for a roll call. Vote, a yes is to approve, a no is not to. Madam Clerk, at your, at your pleasure, please call the roll.
Thank you.
Yes. Somebody wanted my attention?
I waited she called, but I've got a question.
Go ahead, ask it now. You want to wait till she gets you? Go ahead.
I waited she does, I got a question on something we did.
Okay. Roll, roll call, vote, yes is to support the nomination, no is against it.
Jorge Cruz. Dashell Spell. Rolanda Smith. Akin Voight. Jeanette Hearn. Michelle Lyons. Amy Marie Bishop Anisha. Mary M. McBride Lee. Pass. Richard Ortiz. Maria Valle. Maria? Maria Pereira. Samia Suliman. Ernie Newton. Mary M. McBride Lee. Thank you, Mary.
As I understand it, the appointment passes.
It passed.
Councilman, just to have an inquiry before we adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Thank you very much.
Somebody from there, who said that?
Yeah, I think it was Amy Marie.